Out will be, I guess, few hundred folks with clipboards and sheets going door to door. And it would have to be a few hundred every day, all day for that last four weeks. Like two or 300 folks with clipboards and sheets, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, round the clock banging on doors in Orleans Parish to get signatures. So that recall could be a hindrance. The mayor's term could be a hindrance. Can't sign someone to a five-year deal. You know, job security is limited with that. So it is really a great point by Eugene Green that no one's mentioned. That's what we bring you every day on the program where New Orleans talks. Corey Johnson with you, the neutral ground. Oh, so fine, 93.9 FM, 93.9 FM. You can also check out the show at 107.9 FM. We're on TV, the first 90 minutes of the two-hour talk radio program on television, live on the radio and the simulcast on Cox Channel 4, Your View Louisiana, all over the state, 4:00 to 5:30, wherever Cox Television is in Louisiana, I'm there, 4:00 to 5:30 weekdays. Maybe you're a chartered television subscriber, Spectrum TV, Spectrum Channel 333, all over the state of Louisiana from 4:00 to 5:30. Live streaming, corytalks.com, Corey spelled K-A-A-R-E, corytalks.com. We're on YouTube, our YouTube channel, click to subscribe. Hey, by the way, you can email us, cory, K-A-A-R-E, cory@corytalks.com, cory@corytalks.com. Hey, it is holiday season, stocking up the bar, lowest prices allowed by Louisiana law on wine, alcohol, and cold beer, super discount store in Chalmette. Prices on everything the last few years have significantly gone up, like noticeably gone up. Things are a measurable percentage, and I'm not talking like 3%, 4%, 5% rate of inflation higher, 10%, 15%, 20%, 25%, 30% higher, 50% higher. Everything's more expensive this holiday season when it comes to wine, alcohol, and cold beer. Why don't you buy it for the absolute guaranteed lowest price allowed by Louisiana law? No one has lower prices, no one has a better selection. The fluke, they don't have what you drink, they'll get it. And it'll be for the lowest price allowed by Louisiana law, by the bottle or can, six-pack case, or pallet full, any quantity, super discount store in Chalmette this holiday season. A no-brainer. Monday afternoon edition of the program, Corey Johnson with you. Eugene Green joined us a few minutes ago, New Orleans City Councilman. They respond to the mayor's letter about the police chief. Hey, we want some input from you, council. Counsel responds, okay, appoint an interim chief when Chief Ferguson steps down. Conduct a national search, best and brightest. Create a selection committee, taking input from you, the mayor, the council, the public, and have the council approve the appointee. No, I think that's a really good response signed by all of the council members. Hey, Young's Dry Cleaning, a New Orleans institution since 1940, the best dry cleaner in the city, youngsdrycleaning.com, youngsdrycleaning.com.
With 13 colleges and universities and a booming job market, Greater New Orleans is the ultimate destination for your higher education. Your path to the future begins in Greater New Orleans. Find out more at studynola.com. If you love Katie's Restaurant in Mid-City, you're gonna love Biennenu and Harahan. The same folks bringing a little of that New Orleans flavor to Hickory Avenue. If you love Katie's, come to Biennenu on Hickory Avenue in Harahan.
The port of New Orleans is the gateway to global commerce, the economic engine that moves Louisiana and our country forward. For more than 125 years, Port NOLA has continued to deliver the goods we use each and every day, by river, rail, and by road. No matter what, it all happens right here, delivering Louisiana's future at the port of New Orleans, your working river. Learn more about your port of New Orleans, visit portnola.com.
Rousas Markets means convenience. Every one of our 65 locations opens at 7:00 AM, some at 6:30, and they're open until 10:00 PM, with some staying open till 11:00 or even midnight. Convenience, Rousas Markets, tastes like home.
For over 30 years, one of the premier security companies in New Orleans and South Louisiana has been Tommy's Lock and Alarms. And right now, Tommy's Lock and Alarms is hiring. Come and work for one of the best security companies in the region, with great pay, great benefits, and a take-home vehicle. Tommy's Lock and Alarms is hiring, and they're looking for you. To apply for one of these coveted positions, go online to tommy'slockandalarms.com. Tommy's Lock and Alarms.
Have a painting project but can't decide on the perfect color? At Helm Paint &amp; Decorating, we offer half pint paint samples in any Benjamin Moore color for under $5, so you can test potential paint colors before investing in a full gallon.
Helm Paint and Benjamin Moore, let us to you in the right direction.
Ford F-150, number one seller in America. What about in the USA? Let's see, what about in the world? Who sells more trucks than Ford? Nobody. It's because the Lamarck team is the real team. All that makes it happen is one goal, everybody having a great experience at Lamarck Ford. We became number one for a reason, because we're good, and we need to prove it every day, every deal, all of the time.
Which metro New Orleans area restaurant made CNN's Top 50 in America and ThrillList.com's Top 25, and has served presidents at the White House? For over 40 years, Trey Yen in Mandeville.
For game-changing innovation, look to the Laitraam family of companies located in Harahan. Intralox, a Laitraam company, changed the game when they invented modular plastic conveyor belts over 40 years ago. These belts and innovative Intralox technology are transforming movement in manufacturing facilities around the world. Intralox is a dynamic global company now hiring in production, warehousing, shipping, and more. If you want to be part of our successful team, visit laitraam.com. That's L-A-I-T-R-A-M dot com.
Recently, Kim Kardashian was seen at super discount store in Chalmette.
Let's party!
Can you think of any other celebrities that won't sue us? Super discount store in Chalmette, the lowest price allowed by Louisiana law on wine, alcohol, and cold beer, 3235 Paris Road.
The city's premier day spa experience is at the Woodhouse Day Spa with four area locations, New Orleans, Slidell, Baton Rouge, and Metairie. A day of relaxation is just moments away at the Woodhouse Day Spa, nola woodhouse spas dot com.
Yeah, you're right, holiday season, guys. What am I gonna get her? Is she going to like it? What am I gonna get her? A day of relaxation at the city's premier day spa. That would be the Woodhouse Day Spa, four area locations, Mandeville, a fifth location opening up early next year. Is she going to like it? No, guys, she's not gonna like it, she's going to love it, it's exactly what she wants. This is like her big screen TV for the Super Bowl. She wants to go to the Woodhouse Day Spa. She wants that day of relaxation. Now, guys, if you're really smart, get with your buddy who, you know, your buddy's wife or girlfriend's best friends with your wife, they do it together, you guys get that gift for each of them together. That way, they're getting their day of relaxation, going with a friend, having an excellent day. No, it's what she wants, guys, she wants to go to the Woodhouse Day Spa. They're on Canal Street at Carrollton in Mid-City, New Orleans. They're in Metairie, near North Kenner, Transcontinental by West Esplanade. They're on the North Shore, Slidell, I-tenant Gauze, and coming early next year, a Mandeville North Shore location. And they're in Baton Rouge by the Mall of Louisiana. There's a Woodhouse Day Spa near you. As a matter of fact, you can get a little virtual tour. Print your own gift certificates this holiday season, any denomination, including a full-blown day of relaxation for her. Go to the website, nola woodhouse spas dot com, nola woodhouse spas dot com. Yeah, check out the website. Guys, what I recommend is going to one of the four locations, going into that lobby foyer area, and get one of the staff to help you pick out a lot of goodies in there for her, a little gift bag, candles, bath salts, moisturizers, slippers, and things they heat up, put on their neck to make them feel better, all this kind of stuff. The Woodhouse Day Spa, guys, holiday gift-giving problem, what am I gonna get her, is she gonna like it? All that solved, Woodhouse Day Spa. I got a few $50 Woodhouse Day Spa gift certificates to give away, to get you jump-started this holiday season. Hey, why is there a large cut in the St. Charles Avenue neutral ground at Taladano? You notice that on St. Charles at Taladano? A few blocks towards the CBD from Louisiana, the neutral ground all of a sudden is just pure concrete. You can drive across it for like 50 or 60 yards probably, at least a good 50 yards. It's not just a cut-in for Taladano Street, it's much wider. Why? There's a specific reason, that's not a mistake or an accident, or they did it because there'd be such a little piece of grass there that they, they just might as well make it all concrete. It's not concrete anywhere else, it's all grass in the middle. People are jogging, you know, on there, the street cars running, it's a grass neutral ground with streetcar tracks. Why is it concrete for that 50 yards or so? At Taladano and St. Charles, St. Charles Avenue, the neutral ground at Taladano, why is it concrete? Why is it like 50 yards wide there? Specific reason, give me the answer. I got a $50 Woodhouse Day Spa gift certificate for you. 50 big bucks at the Woodhouse Day Spa. Rousas Markets phone lines, 766-9480, 504-766-9480, 766-9480. It's definitely one of the oldest man-made structures in the United States, could be the single oldest man-made structure in the United States. It's about 80 miles from the French Quarter, within 80 miles of the Quarter, less than 80 miles from the Quarter. Any clue? If you got an answer, I got 50 big bucks for you at the Woodhouse Day Spa, 504-766-9480. GQ on the North Shore is on a roll. He's got some good answers. World's first movie theater, the world's first movie theater. Give me the answer to that, 50 big bucks at the Woodhouse Day Spa is yours, 504-766-9480, What is, who is Ruby de Cherry and Scrim? And no, I'm not speaking a foreign language, Ruby de Cherry and Scrim. Anyone know, heard about, know what this is, who this is, what this is? Ruby de Cherry and Scrim. Give me the answer to that, I got 50 big bucks for you at the Woodhouse Day Spa. You know the rules, huh? No Intranet device, no search engines, no DuckDuckGo, or Bing, or Yahoo, or Google, none of that, no AltaVista, none of that. You either know the answer or you don't. Rousas Markets phone line, 766-9480. A 21-year-old, a 20-year-old accused of stealing from mailboxes in Covington, the age thing makes sense. It would have to be just super young kids that, I mean, I don't know about you, the mail mailbox, that's just like off, you do not mess with that, it's just, that's feds, that's, that's major lawbreaking. You do not mess with the mail. You don't steal other people's mail, you just don't mess with the mail, it's a federal offense. You're not getting, the NOPD, you're getting the NOPD, and then the FBI, the feds, just sort of a unwritten American rule, no one messes with the mail. Well, that was up to like the last few years. Now you have folks raiding mailboxes, it's unbelievable. Just because there is no, first, you know, the mentality, no repercussions, just react emotionally, don't worry about tomorrow, don't worry about, you know, equal and opposite action to your action, just do it, just go, go, emotion. Already have that problem with regular adults in New Orleans and Louisiana, so emotional, believing what we want or hope is true, not what is. So no, children, obviously, they're gonna embrace that. And, uh, no, I mean, just mail was off limits, not to these young pups. What's that, blue boy? Don't call those criminals pups. You're right, buddy, sorry for the insult. You're ready for some food and a walk? Buddy, you know I've got the 5 o'clock pow-wow next. You didn't forget, you were just saying you're ready for food and a walk after the show. I got you, blue boy, coming right back, New Orleans.
Rousas, New Orleans grocery store. Rousas has the only full-service grocery stores both in the French Quarter on Royal Street and in the CBD on Barone in the old Sewell Cadillac Building. The Rousas on the River, Chappatoula at Napoleon, is in a century-old warehouse. And Uptown on Ferret at the corner of Valence is Rousas' all-new boutique store. With seven locations in Orleans Parish, Rousas is New Orleans grocery store. Rousas Markets, tastes like home. In New Orleans, we don't eat to live, we live to eat.
More is better.
Scott Craig of Katie's.
That is our slogan, more is better at Katie's. It means more of everything, not just more food, more smiles, more friendship, more love, more, more, more. When you do something, you have to do it right. It's all about more, and it's all more of the good things.
Get more at Katie's Restaurant in Mid-City.
For years, you've been hearing about the virtues of Springfield Wellness Center and their successful treatment of over 1,000 individuals who overcame their substance addiction. Now it's your turn. Here's Springfield's founder, Paul Norris Medier.
Our brain restoration plus detox treatment is an intravenous nutritional supplement that restores the brain's chemical imbalances. Our patients detox with minimal withdrawal symptoms. It also blocks the craving, which is unbelievable, and which is why most people say they have a hard time believing, but it restores neuron function. Many treatment programs use one drug to get you off of another drug. At Springfield, we treat the problem. Addiction is first a brain disease. If you or a loved one suffer from substance abuse, please just give us a call.
Put your addiction behind you. Call Springfield Wellness Center now, 504-291-2800. That's 291-2800.
Greater New Orleans, a destination for learning. With 13 colleges and universities and a booming job market, Greater New Orleans is the ultimate destination for your higher education. Your path to the future begins in Greater New Orleans. Find out more at studynola.com.
Where can you find shish kebab in New Orleans? Lamb, beef, chicken, shrimp, plus all your other Mediterranean favorites. Lebanon's Cafe, on the streetcar line, lunch, dinner, and shish kebab, Lebanon's Cafe.
For game-changing innovation, look to the Laitraam family of companies located in Harahan. Intralox, a Laitraam company, changed the game when they invented modular plastic conveyor belts over 40 years ago. These belts and innovative Intralox technology are transforming movement in manufacturing facilities around the world. Intralox is a dynamic global company now hiring in production, warehousing, shipping, and more. If you want to be part of our successful team, visit laitraam.com. That's L-A-I-T-R-A-M dot com.
The port of New Orleans is the gateway to global commerce, the economic engine that moves Louisiana and our country forward. For more than 125 years, Port NOLA has continued to deliver the goods we use each and every day, by river, rail, and by road. No matter what, it all happens right here, delivering Louisiana's future at the port of New Orleans, your working river. Learn more about your port of New Orleans, visit portnola.com.
Why wear the same old glasses that everyone else is wearing? Stand out from the crowd, come to Art and Eyes. Art and Eyes is not your typical eyeglasses store, it's one of the finest eyewear shops in the country, right here in New Orleans, with precision-engineered prescription lenses and gorgeous high-quality frames from the heart of Europe, Japan, and the United States. Our products are thoughtfully curated, and our staff are here to help you find exactly the right frames. Art and Eyes, a magazine as unique as you.
For home surveillance, it's Tommy's Lock and Alarms. With smart home technology, control lights, locks, cameras, thermostat, and your alarm, all from your phone or laptop. Smart, safe, secure. Tommy's Lock and Alarms, Google them.
When you think of Fury's Restaurant in Metairie, you think about their daily lunch specials like red beans and rice, black-eyed peas, white butter beans, liver and onions, daily lunch specials, Fury's Restaurant in Metairie.
The Woodhouse Day Spa, the premier day spa experience is now more convenient than ever. Now open, the Woodhouse Day Spa, Metairie location, West Esplanade at Transcontinental. Metairie and Kenner's premier day spa experience is at the Woodhouse Day Spa.
Come a knock on our door. We've been waiting for you.
John Ritter was so good in the show. Boy, he was really good in, uh, he was a snake wave, the movie John Ritter, as the gay neighbor character. He was excellent in that. Great acting, totally believable. John Ritter passed away a few days ago. I mean, Don Knotts is beloved and hysterical, but John Ritter was much better in that role than Don Knotts. Don Knotts was a good replacement for the like landlord of the building, but, uh, different character, but kinda was supposed to take the, you know, star power that John Ritter took with him, trying to replace that. Anyway, they, I think once you lost Ritter and Suzanne Somers, that show went south quickly. Yeah, you're right, Corey Johnson back at you, 5 o'clock pow-wow on a Monday afternoon. Thanks so much for joining us. 5 o'clock pow-wow this afternoon, brought to you by Katie's in Mid-City, so good. Lunch, dinner, seven days a week, plus open throughout the day, full of New Orleans characters, the quintessential New Orleans neighborhood restaurant. So there are lots of locals that walk to Katie's, but that might make up 5%, 10% of the folks inside. There are folks that live in entirely different neighborhoods in and around the metro area, they drive, they park, they come to Katie's, and it's like their restaurant, they're in there three, four times a week. You know, I talk about a mid-city mainstay in Katie's, there are folks within the mainstay that are mainstays themselves inside of Katie's, a bunch of New Orleans characters that are in there all the time. You plop down at the bar at Katie's, some of the conversations you'll hear will knock you off your bar seat. Plus, a true taste of New Orleans, big portions, great for sharing, New Orleans specialties we're all familiar with, plus a lot of other things from like pizzas to po' boys. It's Katie's, as New Orleans as it gets. Why aren't you at Katie's right now? 5 o'clock pow-wow brought to you by Katie's in Mid-City. Corey Johnson with you on a Monday. If you missed the last hour, you missed a lot. Eugene Green, city councilman, joined us on the program. Last week, the mayor wrote a letter to the city council. I think it's the mayor, uh, attempting to reach out and act as if she's going to do something different than appoint and anoint the next police chief. Dear city council members, we're well aware Superintendent Sean Ferguson will be retiring later this month. As we move forward, we have an opportunity to engage in a dialogue about the next super. Please allow this letter to serve as an invitation to meet with each of you, to discuss your ideas and suggestions around who could replace Chief Ferguson. This is an opportunity to express your recommendations. Please submit them by this Friday, like it's a deadline of this Friday. So the council with the kind of same tone and inflection fires back a letter, dear Madam Mayor, we appreciate the opportunity to present our recommendations. It's real critical, you know, all that nonsense, and then, for these reasons, the council recommends appointing an interim chief upon Sean Ferguson's departure, launching a national search, calling on all applicants locally and around the country to apply, creating a selection committee to allow for input from the city council and the public, confirming the appointee through the newly adopted council confirmation process overwhelmingly mandated by voters. Following each step with open, continued, and public dialogue will ensure whoever is chosen has the proper vetting and sufficient public support. So essentially, the, I'm not saying they're on two different pages, they, these two, the council and the mayor may totally align on this, but we know exactly where the council stands, and we have no idea where the mayor stands. The council says appoint an interim chief. The council says conduct a national search. The council says create a selection committee, a committee of many that would review the candidates, and then have the council approve whoever the mayor selects. So that committee would go, here, Mayor, here are the finalists, here's the one we recommend. And then the council approves that, or doesn't, and that's it. Still the mayor's choice after a national search. Why would the mayor want to do it any other way? It'd have to be political or power trip. I want to put in Jonette Williams, I want to have the first female chief, I want it to be a black chief. I don't know what the mayor's thinking, making history more important by first female or putting in the best person. Hey, if it's Jonette Williams and they do a national search and national folks are saying, this is the one, Jonette Williams, I'm all for Jonette Williams. I'm not against any NOPD person, I'm just not for only NOPD people being eligible. National search. Now, what will the mayor do? We have no idea. Why this end-of-the-week deadline? Because the mayor wants to appoint and anoint before January 1st. January 1st of next year, few weeks away, the council approves any mayoral appointees. The mayor still gets to name who she would like, he, he, in this case, she, would like for a department head, sewage and water board, fire chief, police chief, Department of Public Works, whatever. The council has to approve it now, by law, by voter mandate. I have no idea what this mayor's gonna do. Will the mayor do the right thing? Maybe. Will the mayor select Jonette Williams or some other selection? Maybe. I mean, this is Mayor Latoya Cantrell, who continues to take trips, continues to fly first class, continues to stay at the Pontalba apartment building like it's, she's entitled to make it her own apartment. It's like a perk being the mayor. Hey, Mayor New Orleans, like the White House for the president, you get this Pontalba apartment, you can live here full-time for free. Continues to eat at high-end restaurants on the city's dime. No, just petty, just lame, just pathetic behavior, childish behavior. You know, Curly Hallman, the failure as LSU football coach? He did say one thing I haven't forgotten to this day, you act like you've been there before. And I didn't agree with what he was saying before that statement, he was like, when you score a touchdown, we're gonna put the ball on the ground or hand it to the referee. This was 35 years ago, almost, early 90s. Curly Hallman didn't like the, you know, players celebrating and, you know, all this stuff that is now just mainstream college and pro football, mainstream sports in America, around the world. Curly Hallman didn't like it, so you're gonna hand the ball to the referee or put the ball on the ground if you score a touchdown? Act like you've been there before. I like the act like you've been there before part. The mayor acts like, man, I got this city credit card, let's go, y'all, come on, let's run it up. Let's go y'all, come on, let's run it up. Just like a child. It's like, yeah, mayor, even though you, you haven't had any success in life with a job or your husband with a job where you've had money and wherewithal to travel and eat at fine restaurants. That's, that's like most of us. I don't do a lot of traveling. I don't need to find restaurants all the time. You know why? Cause I have to pay for it myself like everybody else. But if the opportunity did present itself where one could take advantage of that, one would not take advantage. Hence the term taking advantage. Why would I take advantage? Why would I be cheesy and petty and let me try to, you know, get a free meal on the city dime or travel on the city dime or, you know, to enrich myself, not help the city. It, it wouldn't be being honest. It wouldn't be being honorable. And coupled with the fact that you're an elected official. It's public money. This isn't even a private company and you're abusing the private company credit card, which is totally wrong. This is even a step up because it's public money. Anyway, no, it's all about integrity, ethics, morals. No, and the mayor doesn't really have a lot of that and pride. It's, it's more like the childish mentality, not, not the adult mentality. Like what can I get away with? No, 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 I definitely like receiving gifts more than giving. You notice how that kind of flips as you become older? You rather give than receive. The mayor's still into the, you know, no, 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 I don't want to give. I'm like an eight year old. I want to receive. It's Christmas time. Corey Johnson with you on a Monday. No, I like the council's response letter. It was appropriate. It was proper. It was smart. But will it be enough to have the mayor do the right thing?
Super discount store in Shawme.
Thirty-two, thirty-five parish road.
Lowest price allowed by Louisiana law on wine, alcohol and beer.
Worth the drive from anywhere.
If you're throwing a party and eat wine, alcohol and cold beer, super discount store in Shawme.
Tre Yen in Mandeville. A New Orleans tradition for over 40 years. Serving the finest Louisiana inspired Chinese cuisine. Open Tuesday through Sunday. Tre Yen.
Young's Dry Cleaning with two walk up locations with personal service. Young's on Claiborne and Young's on Harrison Avenue in Lakeview. Young's Dry Cleaning. Call 288-8381 or online at youngsdrycleaning.com.
The port of New Orleans is the gateway to global commerce, the economic engine that moves Louisiana and our country forward. For more than 125 years, Port Nola has continued to deliver the goods we use each and every day by river, rail and by road. No matter what, it all happens right here. Delivering Louisiana's future at the port of New Orleans, your working river. Learn more about your port of New Orleans. Visit portnola.com.
For game changing innovation, look to the Laitram family of companies located in Harahan. Intralox, a Laitram company changed the game when they invented modular plastic conveyor belts over 40 years ago. These belts and innovative Intralox technology are transforming movement in manufacturing facilities around the world. Intralox is a dynamic global company now hiring in production, warehousing, shipping and more. If you want to be part of our successful team, visit laitram.com. That's L A I T R A M dot com.
Ford F-150, number one seller in America. What about in the USA? Let's see, what about in the world? Who sells more trucks than Ford? Nobody. It's because the Lamont team is the real team. All that makes it happen is one goal. Everybody having a great experience at Lamont Ford. We became number one for a reason because we're good and we need to prove it every day, every deal, all of the time.
Come to Fausto's Italian Bistro. Age old Italian recipes like the calamari fritti or spaghetti and meatballs. Lunch Monday to Friday, dinner Monday to Saturday. 5:30 vets a block before door at next. Fausto's Italian Bistro.
For over 30 years, one of the premier security companies in New Orleans and South Louisiana has been Tommy's Lock and Alarms. And right now Tommy's Lock and Alarms is hiring. Come and work for one of the best security companies in the region with great pay, great benefits and a take home vehicle. Tommy's Lock and Alarms is hiring and they're looking for you. To apply for one of these coveted positions, go online to tommy'slockandalarms.com. Tommy's Lock and Alarms.
Rousas Market is hiring. With 65 stores, fuller part-time employment and flexible scheduling, Rousas has a job for you or maybe even a career. Apply at any Rousas store or online at rousas.com.
Custom window treatments can enhance the look and value of your home. At Helm Paint and Decorating, we're proud to offer custom plantation style window shutters by Scandia. Perfect for any window, including large frames, French doors, sliding doors and arches. American made SL300 shutters are available in many colors to match your personal decor. We'll come out to measure and you'll receive fast delivery. Plus they're virtually maintenance free.
Helm Paint and Benjamin Moore led us to you in the right direction.
As New Orleans as a roast beef po' boy.
Grab meat po' boy, duck po' boy.
It's Corey Johnson on the neutral ground in Metro New Orleans on 93.9 FM and 107.9 FM.
Po' boy, roast beef po' boy, alligator po' boy.
Yeah, you right. That's a pretty good one. Go to YouTube, check out Simpsons, New Orleans. Homer Simpson eating in New Orleans. It's hysterical and it's really, really well done and accurate. I'm assuming Harry Shearer with his New Orleans connection. He's kind of more than tri-coastal. I think he's got a place in New Orleans, California, New York and London. But Harry Shearer lives in the quarter some parts of the year. So he knows and loves New Orleans as a love of the city. And I think he got with some New Orleanians that he knows that are smart and savvy. I remember I was, uh, dining outside. I was by myself. I was trying to get something to eat one night. I was like, you know, it was like a strange deal. I was like, you know, in a mindset of regular places. And I was like, you know what? It's a nice night. I'm going to go by Clancy's. So I drive by Clancy's like on a Tuesday night or something. And I grabbed a table outside by myself. And, uh, on the other side, you know, Clancy's on a corner. So you have like three tables down one side of the building and then around the corner through other tables. And, uh, Harry Shearer was there, I think with his wife. And Brian Bat was there with his partner. And they were chit chatting and like Brian Bat knows New Orleans. I mean, that could be one of the guys, people like that. Anyway, when you watch it, you'll be like, all right, all the food things are real and authentic. There's nothing that's not New Orleans or made up. Most of them, we all recognize the restaurants where they're most famous. They, they just did a hell of a good job. The, the, it's a cartoon. So the cartoon caricature, the drawings of the restaurant signage or something famous about the restaurant that we visually know was part of the little montage. It was really well done. If you're a New Orleanian and you have any, you know, slight liking of the Simpsons, especially if you really like it or love it, go to YouTube and check out this little, little two minute deal going through all the great New Orleans restaurants and dishes. It's accurate, it's funny, it's just well done. You know, some things are, you know, the Big Easy. Oh shit, that's how we do it in the Big Easy. There's some just, you know, total screw up and abomination of New Orleans, Louisiana, our food, our culture. There's like Dennis Quaid in the Big Easy. And then there's this Simpsons deal, which is right on the money. Nailing it, nailing it. Monday afternoon in the Crescent City, Corey Johnson with you. Look, I, I'm not a Chick-fil-A diner really. I think Chick-fil-A is way overrated, way overblown. More power to them. Line going down vets, I drive by and laugh. I drive by folks standing outside in line to go to Camellia Grill. Like it's, whatever, you know, not worth it. Enjoy it. Wait in line 20, 30 minutes for your Chick-fil-A or your Camellia Grill. Whatever, to each his own. Um, I'm just not a big wait in line person, especially for stuff that's sort of mediocre. But to each his own, I wish I owned a Chick-fil-A. You know, I don't like conservative talk or country music or R and B. And if I own three FM stations, I'd have conservative talk, country music and R and B on those three FM's. Cause that's where the money's made. I, I've been to a Buc-E's. I went one time. I have no desire to go to a Buc-E's again. No reason to go. Don't, I'm not against Buc-E's. I wish Louisiana had a Buc-E's. Baton Rouge was going to get the first ever outside of Texas Buc-E's. Politics kicked in and the Buc-E's all of a sudden, Google it. Buc-E's in Baton Rouge, you'll have the stories of Buc-E's coming to, you know, O'Neill Lane or whatever the exit was, past O'Neill, down I-12 where the Bass Pro Shop is. They're going to have a Buc-E's around there. Then a few months later, hey, we're not going to Louisiana anymore. We're trying to get some other locations. We couldn't secure, we're not building anything in Louisiana. And the real reason is because of Louisiana BS politics. They're like, my God, all these hurdles and crap we have to deal with. So they started going all over the South. There might be 60 plus Buc-E's now and there's probably 20 of them outside of Texas. They're building one at the Menj exit about 20 minutes into, down I-10, 20 miles down I-10 into Mississippi from Louisiana, but not in Louisiana. They're going to Southern Mississippi, but not Louisiana. No, they're expanding all over, but they're avoiding Louisiana like the plague. No, it's crazy, hard to do business here. The old Disney World syndrome. Walt Disney going, man, I went to Florida. They kept asking me what I want, what I want, giving me anything I want. It would always be that way. I go to Louisiana. It was all these politicians with their handout, payouts, payouts. It would always be that way. I chose Florida. Wise move Walt Disney. Louisiana's corrupt and it is a political nightmare. No, so I, I may not be like a Buc-E's fan, but I want the Buc-E's in Baton Rouge. I want the Buc-E's at, you know, the Six Flags site. I'm not going to a Flying J truck stop. That wouldn't be bad for the Six Flags site. I don't hunt or fish really, so I don't go to Bass Pro Shop or Cabela's. I would have loved a Bass Pro Shop Cabela's at the Six Flags site. I, I still would like to see that, that crazy Nagin at the power plant downtown. That's not happening. The River District is, but I would have loved to have seen that Bass Pro Shop there like the pyramid in, in Memphis. So I don't have to like it to one, I, I have empathy and understanding of what's beneficial. What I like is not, and man, if we did everything I like, the city would go under. It's about a gumbo and what everyone likes and what's viable. So I'm for all these things. And no, I may not be a Chick-fil-A diner really. I'm, I'm more of a Raising Canes. I don't eat fast food at all. The only fast food I eat is Raising Canes. And then the only other one, like an emergency would be like Chick-fil-A. I might go to Chick-fil-A in the morning, grab like a chicken mini thing and eat the little chicken nugget, like half the little biscuit thing or bread thing. Might eat two or three little fried tater tot things. I don't want the rest of them just greasy. Chick-fil-A's real salty. That's just me. A lot of you love it. You cut off your left arm for Chick-fil-A. You think it's like the greatest things in sliced bread. More power to you. So with all that said, tomorrow, the Chick-fil-A Mid City, New Orleans opens. A standalone location. Carrollton at Tulane. No, the reason I bring it up and I brought it up before, because it's significant. Because it's Tulane and Carrollton corner, kind of a rough, sort of crusty, dirty looking corner of New Orleans. It's not the best looking corner. That Chick-fil-A looks really good. Lots of landscaping, it's well done. It fits in nicely. No, you can thank Sidney Torres for that. Like or dislike Sidney Torres, he bought that corner. He now owns the Fountain Blow, uh, hotel, the old hotel and the apartments next door. But he bought that. He got with Chick-fil-A. He banged out the lease. He got Chick-fil-A committed to build there. No, you can thank Sidney Torres for bringing in the highly unlikely Chick-fil-A to that Tulane Carrollton corner. Now I've been on social media, it's comical. Just negative folks that hate New Orleans, no matter what, yet live in the metro area. It's mind blowing. You don't like New Orleans, you leave New Orleans. You don't like New Orleans, you move to Metairie? I don't like Denver. I now live in the suburb of Denver. Boy, I hate Cleveland. I live in the suburbs of Cleveland. What? You obviously don't hate New Orleans. You love it if you didn't leave the area. North Shore Metairie, you don't hate New Orleans, you love it or you would have left the area. It's such crazy, only in New Orleans talk. I hate Cleveland. I live in the suburbs of Cleveland. Uh. No, these naysayers, Chick-fil-A, oh, oh, the Carrollton Tulane is going to get robbed. It's not going to do any business. It's not going to do any business, huh? They're going to do 20 grand a day. All right. They're going to do six million a year. That Chick-fil-A is going to slaughter it. You want to know why? Cause about a mile, about three miles away in Uptown, their demographic, white conservative families, mother, dad, children. About two, three miles away in the other direction, Old Metairie, white conservative, mom, dad with children. They love Chick-fil-A after baseball practice, after the baseball, basketball games, whatever. They love Chick-fil-A. That Chick-fil-A on Carrollton Tulane is going to kill it. It's going to slaughter it. They're going to do great business. 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And from what I understand, it was supposed to be drive up only. Forty-two drive up slots. Two lanes, drive up only. Then they brought in outdoor tables, outdoor dining. Now I understand there might even be a few spots inside you can eat. So it might actually end up being a full functioning Chick-fil-A. We will find out all of it tomorrow when it opens. But I'll keep you up to date. No, for me, it's like a, a Buc-E's or a Bass Pro Shop or a Cabela's. I may not go there, but I want it to be there. No, that's huge for Tulane and Carrollton. I know it's silly. A Chick-fil-A in Metairie is just another Chick-fil-A. But a Chick-fil-A on Carrollton and Tulane, significant. It's like when Raising Canes took over those old Burger Kings and, uh, KFCs. Carrollton Avenue, St. Charles Avenue, putting a Raising Canes where you never really thought you'd see one. No, it's tax dollars, it's jobs, it's money for the city. There's no downside to it. It's not the greatest thing in the world, but, uh, no, glad to see it on that sort of crusty corner right there without a doubt. Every day, this program on radio, on television, live streaming, corytalks.com. We're on YouTube. It's brought to you by the Lamarck Automotive Complex. And now Lamarck Crescent City Ford in Elmwood. That's right. Two Ford dealerships. Ronnie's got you covered with the big store, Lamarck Ford at the Lamarck Automotive Complex on the car corner. Williams Boulevard and I-10 in Canberra by the lake. And now Ronnie's got you covered across the parish in Harahan in Elmwood. Ronnie scooped up legendary Crescent City Ford, the truck dealership. So now you've got the Lamarck Automotive Complex in Kenner for over 40 years, bigger and better than ever, $50 million invested. And then right after doing that, Ronnie scoops up Crescent City Ford over by the river in Harahan. Every day, this program brought to you by the Lamarck Automotive Complex and now Lamarck Crescent City Ford. Pretty amazing. Hey, last hour Eugene Green, New Orleans City Councilman joined us discussing the letter the council sent to the mayor. The mayor sending that letter to the council. Hey, like your input by Friday of next week for, you know, possible police chief candidates. The council fires back, hey, thanks for that letter, mayor. We want you to appoint an interim chief. We want you to conduct a national search, create a selection committee to break down that national search and then throw us a candidate and we're going to approve that candidate for you. Appoint a candidate and we'll approve it. The mayor may or may not do any of it. Who knows? It's either following the council's letter or not. It's either appointing or anointing a chief before the end of the year in the next like two weeks. A lot of reports say Deputy Superintendent Jeanette Williams will become the first female NOPD chief, black female. She'll get appointed, anointed that gig. There'll be no process by the mayor within the next two weeks. That's what a lot of folks are reporting. That I think is what the mayor would like to do. But now there is pressure by everybody outside of the mayor But now there is pressure by everybody outside of the mayor saying it's important, let's do a national search, best and brightest. Let's take our time and get this choice right. I think all that makes sense. The council fires back, appoint an interim chief, national search, create a selection committee, have us approve it. Eugene Green joined us in the four o'clock hour to discuss and brought up a brilliant point no one has brought up. The national search thing is the right way to go, but it isn't like, boy, that solves everything because there are limitations even with that. The limitation being you hire from within the NOPD. That person becomes chief. The next mayor comes in, can 86 that chief and appoint someone else? I, I don't know if I've ever seen, and maybe it's happened, has a new mayor, I know they've kept the old fire chief, has a new mayor kept the old police chief? And especially now in, you know, crazy political time we live in now, I, I don't know if a mayor in New Orleans would, hey, I'll keep the old police chief. So it's sort of like a coach taking a job when the GM's on rocky ground. Am I going to take this job with this organization? They fire the GM in a year and then I'm gone when a new GM comes in. So Eugene Green bringing up a great point. You go on a national search, that national candidate, if he wants job stability, man, I know I'm a good chief. I know I'm going to do a good job, but I want stability if I moved to New Orleans, bringing my family down there. I don't want to hop around. I know I'm going to do a good job, so I want like a five-year contract. Maybe with options to renew after that. But that isn't the case. The most this police chief's going to get is about three years till LaToya Cantrell's term runs out. And then there's a different kicker too, that makes it more hard to, you know, a little tougher to bring in somebody from outside. There's a recall effort. I think it's a long shot of happening, but maybe if that recall effort happens, you get a new mayor in even quicker and they could 86 this police chief. So that was a great point by Eugene Green. I definitely think it limits the national search potential a little bit that you're connected to the mayor in her term and it's in a appointed position. But I also think the right chief, the young chief that is aggressive, I'll go into New Orleans, I know I'll implement my plan and I know it will succeed. And my success will be so large, it doesn't matter what politicians are put in. The public support will be so overwhelming, they'll have to keep me. You could have that chief, that mentality. We'll see. That, that's what you'd need. That's what you need. Hey, Latrem, the global manufacturing giant is hiring. East bankers, west bankers, Latrem's Elmwood facility has a job for you. If you live on the North Shore, Latrem's got a Hammond facility waiting for you. A culture of innovation and they're hiring, not really a job, a career. A lot of Latrem employees have been there for decades and decades. For a full listing of positions available, go to latrem.com. Latrem spelled L-A-I-T-R-A-M. Latrem.com.
At Helm Paint and Decorating, our paints are in it for the long haul. In fact, our top Benjamin Moore exterior paints come with a lifetime warranty. Not 25 years, not 50 years. We mean forever. You heard right. At Helm Paint, our top exterior paints have a lifetime warranty against chipping, peeling and flaking. They also are mildew resistant. Imagine painting your home one time and being done with it. Visit any one of our locations today and make that once in a lifetime purchase. Paint that has a lifetime warranty. Helm Paint and Benjamin Moore, let us steer you in the right direction.
Why wear the same old glasses that everyone else is wearing? Stand out from the crowd, come to Art and Eyes. Art and Eyes is not your typical eyeglasses store. It's one of the finest eyewear shops in the country, right here in New Orleans with precision engineered prescription lenses and gorgeous high-quality frames from the heart of Europe, Japan and the United States. Our products are thoughtfully curated and our staff are here to help you find exactly the right frames. Art and Eyes, a magazine as unique as you.
Greater New Orleans, a destination for learning with 13 colleges and universities and a booming job market. Greater New Orleans is the ultimate destination for your higher education. Your path to the future begins in greater New Orleans. Find out more at studynola.com.
Dave Mead Insurance Agency, auto, home, flood business, 504-556-0809. DaveMeadINSAgency.com. Dave Mead Insurance Agency, auto, home, flood business, 504-556-0809. DaveMeadINSAgency.com.
When you think of Fury's Restaurant in Metairie, you think about the freshest local seafood anywhere. Shrimp, oysters, speckled trout, flounder, snapper, soft shells, crawfish. Fury's Restaurant in Metairie.
The Woodhouse Days Bar. The premier days bar experience is now more convenient than ever. Now open, the Woodhouse Days Bar, Metairie location, West Esplanade at Transcontinental. Metairie and Kenner's premier days bar experience is at the Woodhouse Days Bar.
For years, you've been hearing about the virtues of Springfield Wellness Center and their successful treatment of over a thousand individuals who overcame their substance addiction. Now it's your turn. Here's Springfield's Dr. Richard Medier.
For over 20 years, we've successfully treated patients with substance abuse issues and have also had success with patients suffering from chronic stress, depression, anxiety and post-traumatic stress disorder. We uniquely address restorative issues at the cellular level that impact mental health. We treat our patients with an intravenous nutritional supplement that helps restore various brain functions. Most of our patients have greatly reduced withdrawal symptoms. We work toward maximizing nutritional interventions while utilizing traditional medication interventions when needed. Our treatment works toward restoring the brain's health while returning the patient to a normal, dependent, free life.
Put your addiction behind you. Call Springfield Wellness Center now. 504-291-2800. That's 291-2800.
The Lamarck Automotive Collision Center, it's open now. We fix cars and trucks. We do all makes and models and it doesn't have to be a Ford or a Lincoln. It could be whatever you're driving. 32,000 square feet under roof now open at 3101 Williams Boulevard. It's all about you, the customer, getting the most for your dollar. I would say the most perfect collision center anywhere. The Lamarck Automotive Collision Center, 3101 Williams Boulevard. Go check it out.
Young's Dry Cleaning has free pickup and delivery. That's right. Young's Dry Cleaning has absolutely free pickup and delivery, home or office, east banker, west bank. Call Young's at 288-8381 or online at youngsdrycleaning.com.
For home surveillance, it's Tommy's Lock and Alarms with high-definition night vision surveillance systems, letting you see what's going on. Home surveillance that's smart, safe, secure. Tommy's Lock and Alarms. Google them.
If you love Katie's Restaurant in Mid-City, you're going to love Bienvenue in Harahan. The same folks bringing a little of that New Orleans flavor to Hickory Avenue. If you love Katie's, come to Bienvenue on Hickory Avenue in Harahan.
Rouse's, New Orleans Grocery Store. Rouse's has the only full-service grocery stores, both in the French Quarter on Royal Street and in the CBD on Barone in the old Sewell Cadillac Building. The Rouse's on the River, Chappatoulis at Napoleon is in a century-old warehouse. And Uptown on Farret at the corner of Valence is Rouse's all-new boutique store. With seven locations in Orleans Parish, Rouse's is New Orleans Grocery Store. Rouse's markets, taste like home.
For game-changing innovation, look to the Latrem family of companies located in Harahan. Intralox, a Latrem company, changed the game when they invented modular plastic conveyor belts over 40 years ago. These belts and innovative Intralox technology are transforming movement in manufacturing facilities around the world. Intralox is a dynamic global company now hiring in production, warehousing, shipping and more. If you want to be part of our successful team, visit latrem.com. That's L-A-I-T-R-A-M.com.
The old preacher habit, yes, I was at Fausto's for lunch. I'd say three out of four Mondays a month, I'm going to be there getting the red beans and rice, that panade chicken breast pounded real thin with the Italian seasoning and breadcrumbs, fried crispy, not greasy at all. Yeah, and those wonderful red beans and rice. The only non-Sicilian or Italian thing on the menu, a Monday lunch special. All the other weekly lunch specials, dinner specials, lunch and dinner menu items, all Sicilian and Italian. It's Fausto's Italian Bistro on Vets. They opened up their doors for dinner about 45 minutes ago. They'll go till 9:00 PM tonight. Fausto's Italian Bistro on Vets, so good, you won't be disappointed. Corey Johnson with you. A Monday afternoon in the Crescent City, a Martel Monday. Brett Martel from the Associated Press joins us again on the program. How you doing Brett?
Doing well Corey, how are you?
Doing good, man. Thanks for joining us again. Hey, let's do this backwards Brett, instead of jamming all this in at the end. How can folks read your columns, your articles and the like via the AP?
Sure, the best way to, in my opinion, is getting the AP News app on a smartphone, which is free and will give you news from all over the world, not just sports. But you can localize it by putting in your zip code or, you know, doing a search for Pelicans, Saints, LSU, et cetera.
Yep.
Tulane. So, and you know, got to cover Tulane a lot more this year because they were relevant. So that was fun.
Yeah, no doubt.
Yeah, that's the best way. Obviously, you know, AP serves a worldwide market and so I'm writing for a worldwide audience, people outside New Orleans who may be interested in major sporting events that are happening here. So if you Google my name and, and a subject of interest, you know, you'll probably come up with some articles that way too.
Hey Brett, what's up with the Saints and Cam Jordan and the fake injuries? I mean, I, I, look, I don't buy into this NFL's against the Saints. I mean, even with Bounty Gate and all that, I think it's a lot deeper than that. Think that was sort of a convergence of Bounty Gate, Pillgate, Peyton's emails, Ornstein, a lot of things.
Right. This is a little different.
Yeah, I, this is different though. I mean, I, I don't believe in the conspiracy. I don't think the NFL's out to get the Saints, but I think they screwed up on this one Brett. I don't get what it's based on. You're talking about an honorable guy that's like a man of the year type, you know, DiMario Davis, man of the year type candidate. Just a, you know, clean living, family oriented, you know, accomplished player on and off the field. Beloved Cam Jordan, sort of like the poster boy for, you know, the NFL. That's who you want. And uh, they're saying he, he was, he's lying that he wasn't injured. He's upset, the Saints are upset, they're vehemently denying it. Talk about these major fines and uh, what do you think's going to come of it? I don't, I don't think this is going to work out well for the NFL, to be honest with you.
I don't think so either. Now, you know, it's different with players, the NFLPA and, you know, so Cam Jordan and his agent, with the assistance of the NFLPA can appeal this.
Yep.
Generally, coaches and teams don't, don't get to appeal.
That's interesting. You're right, they would have to sue. They'd have to sue.
Right. So what the Saints have done, I think, is they've just put out a statement saying that the NFL is wrong and it's going to really be up to the NFL to, to, to say, may I culp we messed up and, and rescind the punishment or not, but there's really no process, if, if you will. But Jordan said today, you know, if this weren't civil court, he would countersue for triple damages because, you know, he's really adamant, obviously his, his agent Doug Hendrickson is on the record referring to the fine as idiotic and a joke. And you know, so the Saints have said they had an MRI down, it showed a, it showed a foot sprain. Jordan said that he had a swollen foot for the past week. He was in the facility every day getting treatment. But what you've got, you know, you mentioned some of it. I mean, Jordan is a, is in his 12th NFL season out of Cal. His father was a tight end in Minnesota. He is a seven-time pro bowler himself and also a former All-Pro. And he has missed, so now he's in his 12th season, he's missed two games in his entire career. So he's known within the Saints organization for playing through pain. And one of the games he missed was for COVID, which had nothing to do with an injury, but it's just NFL protocol. I mean, he got a positive test, he couldn't play. So he's really missed one game for injury in his entire career. That was earlier this year. But clearly has a very high tolerance for pain. If he feels he can move and he's not in danger of really injuring himself, he'll just go back out and play with the pain. So, you know, you had a situation where his foot hurt, he sticks onto the sideline, my foot's bothering me. They said, get down, kneel down so they can stop the game and we can look at you. Now, I think the Saints coaches wanted him to get down. They wanted him to make a decision because as to how bad he was hurting right away because Tom Brady was trying to hustle the team up to the line of scrimmage. It's kind of irrelevant because the, you know, Buccaneers coach did not want to go for it on fourth and 10 from his own 25 and he, he wanted to punt and they did punt. There was more than seven minutes left in the game and the Saints were leading by 13 points.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, but I think what happened is, you know, the coaches see Tom Brady hustling up to the line. Cam Jordan's like, uh, my foot hurts. And the coaches are like, get down, you know? So they'll stop the game and we can check you out. They checked him out, they taped it up. He went back in. And I think because he went back in, because of how the coaches reacted while Tom Brady was trying to hustle them up to the line.
Right.
Because, and because he went back in, the NFL smelled a rat. Now, the timing is interesting because before this happened, about three days before this happened, there was an internal memo in the NFL that was obtained by the Associated Press. And it, it stated that, you know, their officials, the league had noticed a trend of teams inappropriately delaying games with
Fake injuries, yeah.
Fake injuries. Yeah. And they wanted, and, and that they were going to, so they sent out this memo, it's an internal memo, and they said, we're going to crack down on this.
The NFL flop.
Three days, right. So three days after they send out this memo, you see Cam Jordan doing this thing in the game and, you know, they're like, oh, you're just throwing it in our face and we just sent out a memo about this and now you're doing this.
Now, it's all interesting with the timing and all that. I, I think Cam's appeal will, uh, I think he's going to, he's going to win. And then I, I'm wondering if the Saints will pull an Al Davis and sue or they'll just hand over half a million bucks? Is that the fine, like half a million dollars?
Well, it's 350 for the team and then, you know,
Ouch.
I mean, Dennis gets, Dennis gets a hundred.
All right, still a third of a million dollars, just going to write that check when the NFL's wrong. It's going to be interesting to see where this goes. Hey Brett, Tampa has more losses than wins. They lead the, the Saints division right now at six and seven. Every other division in football has a winning record leader. Some have a, a second, even a third place team in the division with a winning record. Every team in the Saints division obviously has a losing record. The Saints are just two games out of first place. There's only four games left. What happens if all teams in the South end up eight and nine? Saints lose the tiebreaker to Tampa, I guess.
They would lose the tiebreaker to Tampa. They're going to have to finish ahead of Tampa. I don't know about the, they've already beaten Atlanta. If they beat Atlanta again, then they'll win the tiebreaker there.
So Tampa would have to go one and three down the stretch and the Saints would have to go four and O. And you need a little Carolina, Atlanta help too.
Probably, yeah. I mean, the thing is, you know, it would, a three-way tie would be interesting because the Saints lose the tiebreaker to Tampa Bay, but I don't know if Tampa Bay would lose a tiebreaker to
Carolina or Atlanta. Yeah.
Right. And if, and if, and if the Saints would have the tiebreaker on that team, but not on Tampa Bay, right? But Tampa Bay wouldn't have the tiebreaker on that other team, either Carolina or Atlanta we're talking. Then you'd have a situation where they have to go to some other tiebreaker, which would be divisional wins and then conference wins and then, you know, uh, I don't know, I don't even know what the
Yeah.
I have to look it up.
Yeah. Hey Brett, I was at Fausto's today and I was eating lunch outside and a former Tulane player from like my era walked out, so fired up. We talked about uh, this Tulane game, it just gets better and better. It's USC, they're 11 and two, like Tulane, they're 10th ranked. It's the Trojans, one of the, you know, college football's historic programs. And you have the Heisman Trophy winner now. And I think that Heisman Trophy kind of forces his hand, like he's going to have to play in that Cotton Bowl. Doesn't have to play, but I think he will play because he's got that Heisman Trophy. I, I love this Tulane Bowl game. It's hard for it to get any better for Tulane. They, they earned it. They beat Cincinnati. They got revenge with Central Florida. They, they earned it, they beat Cincinnati, they got revenge with Central Florida. They won the American Athletic. They're 11 and two, they're 16th ranked in the land. They're, they earned the Cotton Bowl and USC's kind of, man, we overtime loss, would have had a playoff berth. Now we're relegated to the Cotton Bowl. We're playing Tulane, they had two wins last year. You know, I think they're not fired up about it. Will their Heisman Trophy-winning quarterback play? And uh, do you agree with me that Tulane ascended into this Cotton Bowl and is fired up about it? And USC sort of descended into it and are kind of bummed about it?
Yeah, I would, I would equivocate it to, like I think I mentioned before, the three Alabama Sugar Bowls I've covered in 2008.
Yeah, that was a great point. Go ahead with that point.
All those games.
Yep.
You know, uh, and they, they probably were the better team all year than the team they played.
Yep.
In the Sugar Bowl.
They just weren't motivated because they're bigger sites, the, the big target, the, it was lost. It, it kind of,
Yeah.
deflated them. Now, I think USC will be like that, but also new first-year coach, future of the program, that kind of thing. I mean, I think that would be the Kelly LSU argument with Purdue.
Yeah. And I mean, I think the other thing is, you know, I just can't see Southern Cal, um, going to bowl week. And I mean, I think they're going to see it as a reward for their players. I mean, we'll, we'll see, but I just can't see Southern Cal being really, really uptight about regulating players' activities during bowl week. I think they're going to want them to enjoy it, you know?
Oh, I'm for sure, but how does Southern Cal get fired up for Tulane?
Yeah, the only way they get fired up, which is not the best way, is to say, well, we don't want to lose to these guys.
Yep.
Yep. But that's, that's not necessarily the best way. I mean, you know, maybe their coaching chair is going to tell them, this is a Super Bowl for Tulane, you better be ready for their best shot.
Exactly. Exactly. Tulane's fired up about this game, 12 wins.
Yeah, I just don't know how well it's going to resonate with the Southern Cal players. I mean, the Southern Cal players may hear that and say, yeah, 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 whatever, we're going to beat them, don't worry. And then come out flat, you know? I mean, that just seems to be what happened at Alabama three times. I mean, we're talking about a Nick Saban coached team. You think he doesn't know, have any idea how to get guys ready for?
No, exactly. And just couldn't get it done. No, it's going to be interesting. LSU I think is a little different Brett, because, I mean, Purdue, uh, eight and five. I think LSU is just the better team, but um, I don't think they're, do, do they want to, you know, let me put it to you this way, I don't think the Georgia game is why they are where they are. It's the Texas A&amp;M game. Kelly first year, 10 wins. You know, I think they want to finish strong. I, I don't think they're bummed they're playing Purdue like USC is kind of bummed about the Cotton Bowl. That's just my take.
I suspect so. I mean, you know, um, you know, Kelly's still trying to build this thing. He's looking at, um, I mean, he's, he's going to have these players basically feeling like, you know, I've got recruits coming in, I've got transfers coming in.
Yep.
This may be the last chance for a lot of you to prove that you are part of the future of this program.
Yep.
By playing extremely well. Um, I mean, you know, Lincoln Riley could theoretically do the same thing with USC. I just, it's, it's just, it's just hard to know. I mean, I think there's a lot of variables at this time of the year in college football right now. And it's really hard to know how, if the teams wake up on the right side of the bed, how much personal stuff will be going on with key players, whether it's, you know, agents in their ear.
Yep.
Um, you know, all these things going on and, um, you know, it, it's interesting. I mean, I, I just, you know, it's funny because, you know, people love to bet on these bowl games. I, I wouldn't touch them.
Well, no, I mean, it just depends on the game. Like I, I love this Tulane USC game. I love that USC's favored by just two. To me, that yells sucker bet. I think a lot of folks are going to be like, USC just by two? Oh, USC is going to kick Tulane's rear end. So I, I like Tulane in this game. I think Tulane's not even going to cover. I think Tulane's got a really good chance of winning that game. But yeah, I don't bet, I just like following that stuff. Hey Brett, real quick, uh, the Pels, we've got about a minute left, playing some fantastic basketball. What, they've won like nine of their last 11, seven straight.
They won 12 out of 14.
12 out of 14. And, and the, uh, the way they beat Phoenix, not once but twice. The first time that 360 whirlwind dunk may have motivated Phoenix, got them ticked off, didn't matter. Pels take care of the Suns in, in overtime yesterday afternoon. It's really great, playing some great basketball. The bench is insanely deep.
Yeah, the Pelicans, I covered both of those games. First of all, a tremendous environment in the arena. The energy in there is fantastic.
Sellouts, yeah.
Zion Williamson is living up to the hype now finally in his fourth season. Um, and really just delighting the crowd with, with his, uh, you know, high-flying.
Thirty-five a game the last few games, crazy.
Yeah, he tied it. I, I don't think it's a coincidence that he set a season high and then tied it in a two-game set against Phoenix, which is a team that knocked them out of the playoffs.
Brett Ingram's on the bench all this time. It's going to be scary when he comes back. He's as good as Zion.
Yeah, and there will be an adjustment period as they try to figure out how to play together again, but,
Yep.
Um, you know what I mean? But I think that the Pelicans have proved to be very unselfish. They like each other, they go,
Willie's a great coach with all these changes and adjustments.
Yeah.
Be part of the team, be part of the family or, you know, it ain't going to work. And so far, everybody's buying in. Uh-oh Brett, that's Blue Boy. We're going to have to run. I'll see you next week Brett.
Sounds good Corey, take care.
That's Brett Martel joining us. Speaking of the Pels, back-to-back Phoenix, back-to-back Utah, then Phoenix again. Three Suns games, two Jazz games in a five-game stretch. See you mañana.